Thing is completely transparent so that everyone can see exactly what we are budgeting for is in some way it's a good idea because then everyone knows exactly what the charge. But as you have said, within our budget, everything is separately accounted for so people can see that anyway. In some ways, I think that I like the idea of no assessments that we've had. It also forces us to try to keep our millage rate reasonable because I'm concerned in future councils, if we establish an assessment, then future councils can say, well, let's keep the millage rate the way it is. And now we're all of a sudden assessing and, you know, people are paying a whole lot more money. And I just think things could get out of control. So I like the idea of keeping it.
The way we do roads, and you're going to see that coming up, we have a five-year road paving program. And it's clearly stated what roads we're doing each year.
Yes.
We publicize that. And part of the road improvements, a significant part, comes out of our millage rate.
Uh huh.
So, well, now we're in a predicament here because we have differing opinions and...
I want to keep it in the millage rate, like we do the paving. And I said that when we discussed it the last time.
And I take a different opinion. I think it should be an assessment fee. I think that's consistent. And stop me if I'm wrong, if that's consistent with other municipalities in the area. They have separate stormwater assessment fees. And by doing that, we, the stormwater problem is not just associated with our residential homes. It's associated with our churches, our other facilities that do not pay into the general tax. And, yeah. And I think that, you know, everybody that contributes to the problem should have a responsibility and a solution to the problem.
Well, if we were going to follow that line of thinking, then we would have a fire fee, we would have a road fee, we would have this fee, that fee. I mean, that's, if we follow your line of thinking, then we're going down a whole different path than we've been down before. I don't disagree that, you know, it's being subsidized by the people that don't pay the ad valorem tax, but that's pretty much the system that we bought into. So...
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
It's good we have a good debate going here. We are currently working on a project where we are taking a look at how we, on our tax bill. You know, we do it for assessments, for annexation.
Uh huh.
We're expanding it somewhat. And we're looking at tax bills in Venice, Northport, Benita Springs, Fort Myers, Cape Coral, and Ponte Gorda. Those are cities surrounding the area.
Uh huh.
And we may or may not look at unincorporated Lee County, I mean, unincorporated Lee and unincorporated Charlotte. We may or may not include that in there. And we're doing an analysis of how we provide for our core level of general fund services and our average water and sewer bill and our sanitation bill, core level of services compared to these other areas. And you will see, we've talked about it here, that we don't have add-ons. Everything we do comes out of our general fund without add-ons. The only add-on we have is a lot.
And canal. And canal maintenance.
Well, but canals, that's not comparable because some of these other communities have no canals.
Okay.
So we're trying to compare apples with apples, to be fair. When we get that analysis done, maybe that will help when we further this discussion.
I think it would help. Maybe we, maybe you need to put the resolution on hold until we have that discussion.
Beginning to see that.
I'd like having the information.
And I think too, surrounding is good, but also go and look at, try to find some other cities our size. Because what do we really have in common with Cape Coral, other than we're right down the road from them? Not too much. So I think that maybe find some cities in our 15,000 to 20,000 range too, that may not just be right in our area, but just throw them in there for comparison's sake.
Our analysis has expanded. We're working on it.
I'd like to make just a little comment to the record, because I'm inclined to be on Tom's side of the fence here. Even though these organizations may not pay ad valorem taxes and so forth, they still have a valuable asset of that property that that building is sitting on. And what we're talking about is going to be lending towards the value of that asset, whatever it may be. And I think that it's appropriate for all parties to partake in the funding of this flood control. And I also want to just say, make a comment regarding this particular project. In my mind, this is even more important than it was six months ago, even more important than it was two months ago, because the Zika virus issue is coming to the forefront. And Florida is already believed to be going to be the entrance for this particular issue for the United States. And this is something that's going to be one of the aspects that would be able to address that issue too. So whatever we do, I think we're in agreement that we need to fund this project.
Yeah, no, that's been decided, yeah.
I think what we're discussing among ourselves is how we want to fund it. And I just want to say that at this point in time, I'm more on Tom's side of the fence here.
Another thought was asked of me, how many properties would this include? And I think it's important to delineate, this is not just special residential overlay, PGI, BSI, this is the whole city. So this is, it's the impact on an individual homeowner per lot, you know. I think people would like to understand, what does that mean to me? So if there's a way that we can extrapolate that data, that would be, might be helpful. I think, to your point, Rachel, about the fire, with a majority of the services provided are healthcare-related. And we have a number of areas that we have annexed into the city that some of the properties, manufactured homes, may not pay as much in ad valorem fees as an actual home in PGI per se. And so those are still, though, senior citizens who have a lot of healthcare calls. So they may not be paying for services rendered as much as someone else. So we have inconsistency in what we're receiving as far as revenue. So if we're going to look at one, we should look at more than, perhaps look at more than one.
I think the discussion on the project, the analysis of the tax bill should come before movement on that.
You know, that's an interesting, this is an interesting policy call you're going to have to make.
Uh huh.
Because when you do assessments, you're going to be touching on, whether you choose to or not. You don't have to, but many communities have, when you do a fire fee, when you do a stormwater drainage fee. Communities have gone ahead and assessed religious institutions, other nonprofits, for those services that currently they get free, because they don't pay property taxes. Unincorporated Charlotte County, for instance, they pay a fire fee.
I've done enough analysis on annexations to be able to, those below-aligned assessments are, can be significant.
So, this will be, kind of stop the presentation on this discussion because it's, obviously we have, we have some decisions to make.
Just if I might, when Howard and I discussed it, we originally were talking about a number of residential users in the city. And I think that number was around 6,000 or 8,000, was that something in that timeframe?
Yeah.
So that would have been 6,000 or 8,000 units, properties divided into the $500,000. When we talked about broadening it and making it a drainage assessment fee across the city, that number increased to 12,000, 13,000.
Because you're including all commercial, you're including all of the properties that don't pay property taxes. They all contribute to stormwater runoff.
Which is, and in years that we have heavy rain, and we have to spend a lot of resources towards keeping drainage flowing and no standing water, residents could understand and see that this is where their money is going.
Uh huh.
And if it just gets included with the, with the general revenue, I'd just like it to be more transparent.
I guess, though, along the line that Nancy and I have been on, and what I said before, is that when we do have that discussion, that policy call, I would only be, I don't even know that I'm in favor of it, but you would have to reduce the millage rate. Because right now, that 500,000 is in the millage rate. So we would have to...
Well, if I could, it's not 500,000 that's in the millage rate, but I think the number is like 60,000 or 70,000 that's in the millage rate. And that could certainly, would need to be accounted for.
No, I agree with Rachel. We can't, we can't be taxing and assessing.
I agree with that.
I don't see that's an issue. I think it's just a question, which side of the ledger we're going to go on. And I think that it's fair and more appropriate personally to do this as an assessment at this time. I can be swayed, but that's where I'm at.
But I think that the average property owner is going to want to know, what is that going to mean? What, you know, I know that when I'm going to pay the Alligator Creek Waterway fee, I know it's $25. That's what I know to expect. So what is that going to, what would that look like? So that we can, you know, have an apples to apples.
It kind of depends on rain.
Yeah, but we have to budget, we have to put a number, a dollar amount in the pot to be able to spend it. And we have to know, because then, like Nancy's saying, what are we going to do if we have too much rain, we go over? Go back to the general fund and take out a loan? I mean, then you really start complicating issues. I mean, we'll get to it.
We will. We'll get to it, now that we know we have, we have a debate going on here.
Does Kim have a comment?
She has a comment, but it's not on that.
Okay.
We'll probably hear it when she gets back.
Okay.
But, right now, it's in the plan, our CIP, that's going to be in our budget document in this manner. Would you like to put it in a different manner? Do we want to?
I can, here's what I can do. I can leave it up under general funding. And on the detail sheet, in the first year, we already know it's general fund reserve. In the out years, we can put a TBD, we do this a lot, so it's to be determined. And then in the budget message, we can put that there will be an ongoing discussion of the appropriate funding mechanism. But that the city does want a five-year plan.
Yes.
But the funding mechanism is still to be determined, except for the first year. So we can do that, as long as you are comfortable that you're not making a decision this July as to what the future funding mechanism is. But certainly by December...
For the next fiscal year.
For the next fiscal year, we'll need to know if we're going to go with the assessment approach or not. Or at least tentatively.
Okay.
Because we'll have to give a resolution to the county. And may I just make one thing clear, that I did not when I first went over the top level? The funding that you see for all of the public works needs is annual funding. During the recession, in order to help mitigate the loss of ad valorem revenue, we went to alternate years of funding. So every other year, we were funding the bridge or funding TMDL. And every other year, we were funding storm sewer reconstruction, which are the pipes themselves, and refitting them, putting new sleeves in them to keep them usable, and drainage. Now that drainage has been identified to be its own separate major plan, we took that loss of that $75,000 every other year and put in every year doing storm sewer reconstruction. Show the general fund cost is still where it was, and the new drainage improvement is an additional cost. That was an assumption that we made, and I neglected to point that out to you at the beginning of the presentation. So it was always intended that when the economy recovered, we would go back to doing that funding every year. And this seemed the appropriate time to reinstate that.
Okay.
I have a question. As far as assessments in general, harder to employ and defend, or not?
No. I mean, it's very common to use special assessments for some of the items that you've been discussing. There's been a lot of case law that clearly recognizes the city's ability to fund those projects by special assessment. You need to go through the normal analysis to make sure that it is based on the benefit to the property, as opposed to just being arbitrary, in which case it's a tax. But as long as you're able to establish what the costs are and fairly apportion those costs, and the courts have been very forgiving or lenient in understanding how the cities decide to apportion them. So it's a well-recognized means of funding improvements.
And does it always entail a study and methodology study and all of those aspects?
Yeah, I mean, certainly with differing levels of complexity. For example, let's say a fire assessment fee. You know, essentially, what they'll do is, you'll take what your total cost is, find out how many, how many residents or people are likely to be using that, and just divide it amongst them all. That's one way of doing it. Because it's impossible to know whether one house is going to need a fire rescue service more often than next. So you just apportion it evenly. And courts will say, well, that seems like a reasonable way to do it.
I just know what Cape Coral went through, so I was just wondering if we would be somehow subjecting ourselves to more, open to more litigation than...
Well, hopefully, you follow the standard process of doing it, as opposed to just one day coming to a council meeting and saying, we're going to, just, this is what we're going to do.
Okay. Okay.
All right. The, so moving on, the next assessment that is the additional access to Charlotte Harbor. And that is still to be determined, what that cost would be. The initial funding, if we drop down to the damage recovery, we have a new, it looks like our title's expanding for the fund, damage recovery slash sales tax slash sale of assets. We also should add into there, that also contains our BP money. So you do see the 118,000 of funds that we now know we are doing in phase one and phase two. Yes.
Question, why would we not show that up in prior year's funding, since that will ultimately be part of the assessment?
The source of that funding has already been identified as damage recovery.
That's only temporary.
And it is only temporary.
Probably when we enact the assessment, it would move. But right now, we don't really have anywhere to put it.
There is no harm in moving it up. If you would prefer to see it up there, I have absolutely no problem in moving it. Would you like me to do that?
I think if you moved it with an asterisk and just said, when the assessment is established, to be established.
And I think that would make it much clearer what the total cost is going to be. Won't lose sight of the fact that ultimately, it will be part of the assessment. That's a good, very good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
The grant-funded projects, staff is here to answer any questions on those. That project we have been waiting for, for several years. And it is about to get underway. In fact, it's going to get underway a couple of months sooner than we thought, for the Harbor Walk West Area One. Then you have the decorative lighting project, and you have the Carmelita in the out year. Park impacts, those are, the first year, 2017, will be improvements to Nature Park Phase Two and ADA compliance in all of the parks. And fiscal year 2019 is to improve and repair the nature trail. So the out years, we typically don't try to plan the use of those funds until we get closer.
Howard?
We, we say it's going to be the nature center. And that's fine. However, when we finally do get to Ponce Park, and we finally redesign Ponce Park, we may, as a city council, you may want to take park impact fees and help fund the Ponce Park project, because some of that will be eligible for park impact. But that discussion will come. And that's why capital improvements plans are flexible.
And there's grants out there too?
Sure.
For parks?
Yeah.
The transportation impact fees, that fund is much smaller than it used to be. This is, so we don't try to identify until the year occurs where the most appropriate place is to use the 40,000. It will be for sidewalks, it will be to do the little interconnects that are missing, it will be to take care of ADA issues if we can. There is an unfunded segment to this. So if you drop down to the very bottom of the page, you'll see sidewalk improvements of 85,000 unfunded. So the total of the two, the 40 and the 85, is where we would really like to be. We would like to have a $125,000 annual sidewalk program. We feel that would get us much closer to the level of service that the citizens would like to see, to complete all those gaps that we have. And staff will be bringing that plan to you over the next year. And I know, it's a difficult one, because it's a matter of setting the priorities and determining which one should be done first. Any questions on the general construction fund? I sort of glossed over the last ones, because they're already in the works. We are finally doing a purchase order on the 800 megahertz system. And we are looking forward to the cooperation with the county and getting that all up and running this fall. Am I right? The affordable housing was an earlier agenda item, and this was the funding for that agenda item. Moving on. The 1% sales tax fund is voted on by the citizens. And the projects were determined by a committee, at least in priority. And of course, over the years, those priorities can change. And the list, Kristen, if we can just move forward, shows a projection of 2.4 million annually of revenue. We do have some reserves that we will be building up this year unless some of the unfunded projects move forward. So if, that's probably the one you'll want to focus on, that you do have 805,000 of undesignated 1% in 2017, growing to, now that's a cumulative number, growing to a million in 2018. And then you see it drops back down, because there are projects in the out years that will use some of those funds. The list of the detailed funds is, or the projects is here. Some of the ones that we're showing you for previous year's funding are, because those are projects still in the works, still either in the identification process, the bid process, or waiting for construction. So the 20, the new 2017 projects, we had the first of the drainage projects that is in, has been on the drawing book board for quite some time. The Corda Andra area, if you have questions about that, Mark is here to answer it. We have the, the ADA improvement will be a new one. We're showing you $125,000 annually. We don't have detail for you on that yet. That is, that is a planning number. And the outcome of that will be the ADA transition plan that you see that will be funded partially this year and in full next year, to determine how we will best meet all of the federal guidelines to make our city fully ADA. If there are any other questions, I won't go over the rest of the projects. They're all very familiar to you. Just be aware that you do have some excess funds. And if you don't have questions on these projects, we'll move down to the unfunded projects.
So you're saying that the ADA improvement numbers may fluctuate depending on what we get back from the transition plan, as possible?
They may, yes, they may fluctuate. We are hoping we are on the high side.
Okay. When is that due back? I saw them working already, like the day after the...
Really?
Yeah, they were in this building, like the day after the council meeting. So they've, they're out there. Was impressed.
I'm sorry, we don't know.
Okay. Any other questions on 1% sales tax projects? Nope? Okay.
This is the partially funded, unfunded list. So it would be appropriate at some time to address which of these you might want to use some of the excess funds that we showed you earlier. Or you may find that there are other projects. Because these are tied to some of the partially funded projects, on the first list, it would make, it would be important to consider them as higher priorities.
I guess, go back. I guess this might be a Rikini question. But as far as the improvements that we already have, the Mert and the Virginia Avenue improvements, is this all add-on? I mean, the complete streets, is it add-on above what we're already planning to do, correct?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
One doesn't take out the other?
No.
It's just enhancing even more than what we've planned to do in the funded areas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is that Howard's unit question?
Question. I noticed that we have grant funding requested for Cooper Street Complete Streets Improvement, but nothing for Virginia Avenue Complete Streets Improvements. What is the difference in possibly securing a grant from?
We were not eligible. We were turned down for the Virginia. NPO?
Yeah.
Turned down.
Okay.
That's why.
That's good to know.
Questions on these, Nancy?
Yes, just to ask for clarification on the US 41 Bridge Approach Lighting. I know that was, it's been in the sales tax project list. And I was not aware that it wasn't being fully funded when it was in the list. But now we've got it in, it's not fully funded. Is that because we didn't know what it was going to cost to do the project? Or...
I believe it was because it was intended for council to make that decision. So yes, we've now, we now have the 18 and 19 funding for the beginning of the project. And if council would like to allocate sales tax money to do the rest of the project.
But I mean, it was in the project list that was submitted when we voted, when the citizens voted. It was, it was part of the project list. So for, and in some ways, I'm feeling like, and now we're saying it's not funded, you know, it's kind of like the library.
I don't think we're saying it's not funded. We're saying it was, it was never, council action was never taken to put it into the funded list. This would be the appropriate time to do that if you desire.
Well, but I guess the difficulty I'm having is, it was a part of the list that was submitted to the voters to say, do you approve this or not? So the voters approved it. And now we're saying it's, you know, we're saying, these are the projects that this is going to fund.
She's asking whether it's all below the line.
Do you know what I'm saying? Because if...
I'm sure the city manager...
There were projects that were left out of the, because we couldn't afford it. So what we were trying to do at that point in time was come up with a list that would use, that would cover, that we could cover.
Yes.
By the, and now we're saying that we can't. So it's like, well, wait a minute. I'm a voter, I voted to approve that. And now we're saying it wasn't funded. And I'm struggling with...
And I apologize, I do not have the original list here. If I'm doing this from memory...
Well, I know it was on the list, because I'm the one who submitted that.
And I understand...
Because I was asked to submit it. So...
It's kind of like, we made a promise, and now we're saying, well, we're not sure that we really made the promise.
I just need to clarify, I believe, I believe that this...
No, we're going to get good on this.
So, so what you're saying is, because the project was approved, even though it's costing more than what was originally approved, you'd like to see it all up on the fully funded, which is reasonable?
I can understand that. If we made a projection, and our projection was wrong, and we've discovered that it's going to take more than what we thought originally, then I can understand...
We have here, on the original program, we have $60,000, 2018 and 2019, for the US 41 Bridge Approach Lighting.
Uh huh.
We now feel... We now feel the project's going to totally cost one-twenty.
Okay. So, now, what we're saying is really that...
If we want to do the whole thing as staff envisions the total project cost to be. We are applying for grant funding, so we may not have to...
So, then, I guess, I look at that and go, "Well, we were, you know, a hundred percent, fifty percent wrong?" I mean...
It's possible. Depends on how... Depends on the total project, what we envisioned back then to what we envision now.
Okay.
But we have applied to MPO for the...
Yes. Yes, there is a grant applied for.
So, I guess, when the determination on that comes back, we can make the determination on the scope and the funding.
See, right now, our funding is coming in more than projected. Are we sure that that's going to happen three years from now? I don't know.
Right.
So, we've got to be careful on how we can... What we want to commit to as far as any unfunded projects at this point.
And I... Well, and I understand that we have applied for a grant. That's great. And my thinking is, because the voters voted for this, it really isn't council's decision whether we should fund it or not fund it. If there are funds available, then we need to make that...
It is in the funded list, partially.
Yes.
Yes, it is, partially.
Right.
It is. We could do that, just that amount. But we've got time. It's not until 2018 or 19 that we are going to start that. We've got time to revisit it.
I'm okay with that.
Yep, me, too.
Then, the unfunded projects, these are generic. They... The funding could be whatever source we can identify for them, if they become the highest priority. Some of them, we have applied for grants, and those are denoted with the yeses in the grant application process. So, if you have any questions on these unfunded projects, staff again is here to answer your questions. And if you see anything missing from this list that you think should be at least identified in our five-year plan as something that staff should be either gathering information for, looking at, then this would be a good time to give us direction on that.
Question. What is the Harbor Walk US-41 Northbound Bridge Underpass Improvements? Which area is that? Specifically, is that project? I don't recall. Northbound Bridge Underpass Improvement?
Was it like the Mary Point area?
No, 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 no. We have a... That's the underpass between Fort Point and then when you head into Lashley. What does the project sheet say for...
We're pulling it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It might be... I don't know. It might be the...
You don't have page numbers on these.
These are all projects that the Sales Tax Committee discussed at some point in time, and just never made a list. And they may never make a list.
Because some of them are very high-dollar.
Harbor Walk US-41 Northbound Bridge Underpass Improvements. It's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar project, of which we are hoping in 18 to do the first thirty thousand. It would be... It says, "Designed for improvements to Harbor Walk Underpass, including lighting." This is a critical link in the Pontagorda pathway, running along the waterfront, extending from Cooper Street to Fisherman's Village. So, the whole pathway system.
So, I guess, the thirty thousand would be the design, and then...
Yes. Thirty thousand would be for the design. And they're estimating a hundred-and-seventy thousand for the construction. Is this the one that's too narrow right now, that we want to widen it? Yes. So, this is the one. The path is there, but this is such a successful path system. It is the narrowest point of the path, and they want to widen it. They want to make it safer. And to do that, it's, I believe, taking some approvals from the DOT? From DOT, because we're working underneath their bridge. So, it's going to... It's taking a little longer to get those approvals.
Well, assuming we even fund it?
Yes.
Yeah. This is the northbound side, so probably similar to what we're doing on the southbound side.
Yes.
Yes.
There could be bats living there, too. Could be a bat colony we have to deal with.
It would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this slide?
Any additions that we've overlooked? All right, we'll move into the paving program. This is one of those interesting areas where we had a ten-year paving program that needed to generate at least six-hundred thousand dollars a year to get us up to a level of road systems that we wanted. We recognize that we had insufficient funds in the gas tax fund. We can go to the first slide, Kristin. The gas tax fund, which is the bottom, only generates two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars annually. So, the city council, at that time, identified that the appropriate alternative funding for this would be through the millage rate of the general fund. So, the first year, to jumpstart the program, we did, I believe, I want to say, it was close to six-hundred thousand coming from the general fund. Six oh nine, coming from the general fund. And then, we dropped back to an annual paving of four-fifty-nine. So, this is one of those areas of transparency, where we highlight it every year, that this is not just a general service of the city, like your police protection, fire protection, that this is above and beyond, and this is getting our infrastructure up to a level where it ought to be. So, we're transferring money out of the general fund over to the gas tax fund, where we take care of road maintenance. We have the list for you of the roads that will be taken care of in 2017. I believe there's two or three slides. I'm not going to run them off for you. But if any of the council have questions, if there are any roads missing that you had expected to see in 2017, Public Works is here to answer your questions.
I think we've done a better job keeping up with it, so it doesn't get to the point where, you know, people are calling and complaining, and the gravel's hitting your car, and that type of thing. So, I think it's working. And they're always willing to come assess any street that somebody has an issue with.
We also have some street bricking projects in there, which we've separately identified. Okay, then, the rest of the years are all here. These slides, this entire PowerPoint, and the detailed project sheets for the audience, they are all up on the city's website. So, if you just go to the very front page, it will be posted there. And if you have any questions, feel free to either contact the individual directors, who are responsible for them, or you can call my office, and we'll be happy to answer it for you, or get you the answers. Moving on. Now, we're going to move out of the capital improvements into capital outlay. We try to move through this quickly, but this... I believe this is year three of our program. This is another one of our newer financial policies, where during the recession, we kind of got out of the habit of replacing anything, and we put Band-Aids on everything to keep everything running. We recognize that that can't go on forever. So, what you'll see here is a list for each fund of the capital outlay that will need to be replaced over the next five years. And in the budget document, which will go up on the website, probably early August, you will see a detailed sheet for each one of these, either vehicles or major pieces of equipment, with how it was analyzed and why it was felt that it was necessary to replace it. And again, I won't go through these. I will just take questions for the directors as to why those things are there. What's important to see is that we have a smoothing program. So, the idea is, rather than have the general fund budget bounce up and down every year, we take a five-year look at what we need to do, and we fund it smoothly each year. So, the level of funding is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand annually. And that will take us through the next five years of replacing fire trucks, replacing... I think there's a very interesting thing in there. It was on the first page, Kristin. It was a two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollar excavator. Those things do not occur very often. Those are thirteen-year, fifteen-year items, I believe. Rick, this one might even be older than that. Nineteen ninety-two. So, you can see, we get our money's worth out of our capital outlay. And then, of course, these pieces of equipment will be auctioned off, and the funds will go back into the general fund. Any questions on this program?
Again, we've tried to stretch these things as thin as we possibly can, so...
I think you'll notice the fire apparatus are probably the big ones. We are replacing one this year and in twenty... And then, we have one at a one percent sales tax. But the balance of the other two are going to have to come out of the general fund millage rate. Moving on. We have the Pontagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Fund, their capital outlay for this year. They have been steadily replacing all of their old vehicles. In 2020, we'll replace the last of their old vehicles. It's a two-thousand-and-eight pickup truck. Burnstour Isles shares the use of the vehicles. So, they're... They don't... If you would just move to the slide, Kristin. You won't see any vehicles in here. They pay for them through the fee that's charged for repairing their seawalls. What you do see here is the Burnstour Isles Rim Canal Dredging Project, which has been under extended discussion for the last year. Are there any questions about that project?
We're going to be discussing it June fifteenth.
Yes.
June fifteenth.
There will be a pro forma, and we'll show you the results of what the advisory committee is recommending to you. And we have one project in CDB... They have a lot of projects, but this is the one that are warranted being in capital. And it's the Community Guard Fresh Market, which has already been discussed. Utilities OMR. Keep in mind, theirs is very similar to the general fund. The magnitude of it is almost, interestingly, just about equal. If we can go to the detail of it, this... The funding for them, again, is a lot of equipment. The interest... Rolling stock. But when you get down to the bottom, you'll see some things here you won't see in the general fund, which is a lot of what we call motors, pumps, blowers, effluent pumps, very, very high-dollar items, sixty thousand dollars, hundred thousand dollars. They have only identified the ones that they know they need to do in 2017. They will evaluate, over the course of the next year, what they'll need to do in the upcoming years. The amount of money, we believe, is adequate. We did allow a growth factor in there of fifty thousand a year, just based on the age of the plant and knowing that things tend to keep going up in cost. We repair where we can. We generally try not to buy new. We can spend fifty thousand dollars just repairing something. It is an interesting approach, but it has worked very, very well and kept the costs down. Are there any questions? Sanitation fund, we discussed at the last council meeting, so we won't go into any detail. But you will notice that we've added the extra four-hundred thousand dollars to purchase multi-packs versus the standard packers. Out in 2020, we're still showing replacement of three standard packers, because we only need the four multi-packs. The carts, we did not show in there.
Before we do that, probably end of August, early September, one of those meetings, when you come back, we're going to present to you our plan. So, you'll have another look at it before we do anything.
The building fund, again, there have... There's small vehicles to replace. They're trying to do one each year. So, you'll see one in... They did one this year. You'll see one in seventeen, one in eighteen. If we continue to grow, no doubt, we'll see a purchase of a new vehicle, because we have fully used the fleet now. IT, again, Brad is here to answer your questions, if you have any. Theirs are funded through charges back to all the other funds. They are what we call an internal service fund. And these are the projects that they have identified painstakingly. They have cut some and pushed them off. But they feel that they... I guess, I'm speaking for Brad, that he can adequately provide the services expected with this list. Any questions? And that concludes the plan.
So, Kim had some comments, and...
I'll go back to the utilities reserves, capital outlay reserves, that we're trying to change policy. No, no, no. In the slide towards the end, when you get to the utilities.
I think it was with the vehicles.
There you go.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor is in agreement with increasing the utilities fund capital outlay by fifty thousand per year to a level of seven-fifty. So, if you're okay with that, we will be doing similar to what we've done with the general fund, establishing the fleet equipment replacement reserve.
Yes.
And then, if it's not used, it'll just roll over, same...
It will stay identified in that reserve, yes, so roll over.
For that purpose.
Absolutely.
So, this is what we'll include in our proposed budget.
Any questions or comments? No? Okay. I'm going to call a five-minute break.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session. We don't have too many more items. So, next is discussion for options for off-premise, off-premises, open-house signs.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, Urban Design. This is being brought back to the city council. It is an ordinance that was originally adopted in 2008 to allow for off-premises directional signs for open-house real estate signs. That was required for the sign to be placed on developed private property. They were not ever supposed... They were never approved to be put in the city right-of-way. It was done as an economic... To help them economically, to help in the sale of houses. It was a down market, and it was renewed several times. The last sunset is scheduled for July third of 2016. So, we're bringing it back for discussion to determine if it does still need to be extended, or if it's time to let it sunset.
I'm leaning toward the sunset provision, only because I found out from Terry, we are having a hard time controlling the signage that's out there. And with the use of technology, I don't know, you know, how valuable this is. And, you know, we've had this in place for a while now. And yet, they still go to the right-of-way, and they go to the public, you know, the most popular areas on the corner of Bow Harbor and Akia Stah. You know, there's multiple areas that are proliferated with these signs. So, I don't know how we go about correcting that. If we're going to have this provision, then I think we're going to have to deal with that situation.
Yeah, let me chime in, if I can.
Okay.
I have a booth across the street. They're having a regional convention of realtors. I probably won't be let back in after a half hour, is what I'm saying. When this came up originally, and as you know, I have to express concerns regarding regulation of signs by virtue of their content. And at that time, I advised you that our federal circuit is probably one of the most stringent as it relates to finding sign violations based on content-based regulations. But given the circumstances, the economic circumstances at the time, I suggested that you put into the preamble of the ordinances that this was a unique situation... And we sort of took our chances by doing that at that time. Well, recently, the US Supreme Court has come out with a, an opinion which more or less was consistent with the 11th Circuit opinion, that you really cannot regulate signs on the basis of their content, no matter what objective, however legitimate it might be. Because if you, if you allow for these real estate signs to be put on off-premises properties, even if it's private properties, then you have to allow any other sign to be placed on, on off-premise properties. You cannot differentiate between real estate signs, even, even political signs, by the way. So, I, I just think that we've, we were lucky that we were able to do it with, with respect to what we've done in the past. I would be reluctant to give it my legal blessing moving forward.
Well, that's, that's enough for me.
I was, I was a bit ambivalent because I haven't heard a complaint from anybody in the area, but hearing what David said, I'm, I'm okay with sunsetting the ordinance.
So, yeah, so you're really saying we cannot, even on private property?
Right. Now, well, because our sign code regulates private property. Now, I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm saying you run, you run the risk of being sued by somebody that will claim a discrimination regarding freedom of speech. And I don't know what the risk, I can't quantify that risk, but you've, historically, you see that it's the smaller communities that get challenged by the, the larger organizations that support signs of any nature, that can look and make test cases of small communities. So, that's, that's my concern.
I just want to apologize to some of my friends up front for what I'm about to say because they're realtors. I was kind of ambivalent, but I haven't really seen any realtors come to us and really push this. I didn't see anybody make comments today. I'm not sure how effective it is, other than it helps them build a prospect list. With GPS is the way they are today and so forth, if it's properly advertised, it's not hard to find, and I'm more inclined to just let it sunset and go away.
Are we okay with it sunsetting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Do we need a motion or just consensus or...
Well, I think since the ordinance already...
It's sunsetting.
You don't really need to take any action.
I think it's, I think based on what David has said, it's rather obvious that the choices...
We went out on a limb.
Yeah, we were out on a limb and we really didn't know we were out on a limb. And so, I think that for us to...
Pack it up.
This meeting isn't going out live, is it?
I had a conversation, I mean, I've had a couple of conversations with realtors and some who say it's really valuable to us to be able to do that. Another one said what Gary said, the technology has changed over the years and, and with the use of the internet and social media and, and marketing is different than marketing was, you know, five years ago.
It's a good opportunity for somebody to develop an open house app and, you know...
I mean, I, I actually have...
To make your little map and go around and hit them all.
Yeah, I've seen open house signs in the median on 41. I've also seen flutter flags in, on the house, on the property of the house, that is where the open house is, and all kinds of things now. So, I think that even just signs on the property where the open house is are being stretched. So, I guess...
Okay.
We don't need to do anything, do we?
No.
No.
Recommendation from city officers, Howard.
Uh, no. On the next council meeting, you know, we're going to be discussing the, we'll just bring to you the PGI and BSI, primarily BSI budget, so you can discuss it prior to setting the tentative assessments, second meeting in July.
Okay.
Well in advance.
What else? That's it? City attorney.
Nothing further.
City clerk.
We just have one item. The Florida League of Cities has sent out their annual request for the city to designate a voting delegate at the annual business meeting, which is held during the annual conference, which will be in August. And in past years, we've also designated an alternate to that person. This year, I suggested that the, that the mayor serve and had asked you all if you wish to have any discussion, and Councilmember Wine had asked that it be discussed, so I'll turn it over to him.
I really don't have so much discussion, other than I would just like to get a little bit of consensus between us, you know, what we, what we see there, what happens, and just to kind of clarify for everybody what, what the event's going to be like. I mean, I've been to one of the training committees and it's a great place to meet people and so forth, and I just thought it'd be an opportunity to kind of put it out in the public, just what this is really all about, the Florida League of Cities.
Yeah, this is one portion of the conference. It's the business meeting where the resolutions are accepted, the slate of officers are accepted, if there's any bylaw changes there. It's, it's more of the regular agenda of the Florida League of Cities. So, it's one morning and it's, it's an open meeting. Anybody can attend. I think Nancy, you've attended in the past, the business meeting. And then one person is given the packet to do the votes. So, I'm on the nominating committee, so I'm going to be involved with that. And I found out yesterday, they put my name into the resolutions committee as well. So, it's possible that I'm on two of the committees that will be doing business at the business meeting, so I would love to be the delegate.
I think it's...
Do we need to nominate or, Nancy, you just moved that second?
So, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You can still come to the business meeting. There's like the front and the back. So, you can just sit in the back and listen to the business and I can update you, too, if I get put on the resolutions committee, if there's any resolutions. I know last year, we did have a bylaw change because Cape Coral was contesting the top 10 city of the top, the top 10 cities get a seat on the Florida League of Cities board, additionally to the other board seats. So, Cape Coral was challenging Pembroke Pines and they, they did win. So, they're the, now the 10th largest city as far as Florida League of Cities goes for their board positions. So, that was a bylaw change that came about last year that we were, the Southwest Florida League of Cities was obviously, well, most of us were in favor of it, and we did get that changed, so. But you'll, you'll enjoy the conference. It's a good conference.
We can, we can all do our independent assessment of stormwater drainage assessment fees or ad valorem fees.
Good, good topics for conversation.
Yes.
Okay, boards and committees.
Boards and committees. We have, under nominations, we have two terms on the utility advisory board. We have two eligible applicants, so if you would like to nominate and appoint at this time, I would need a motion.
For vote? For utility or just utility?
This is two terms on utility. We have two eligible applicants.
I'll nominate and appoint.
Second?
We have a, do we vote or is a nomination a second enough?
That's a motion. To nominate and appoint is a motion.
So, now vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to nominate and appoint to the utility advisory board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you. And then we have one more, under nominations as well. Two terms on the planning commission. We have three eligible applicants for nomination.
I nominate all.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Under policy and legislation, I have two things. The first of which, you've all received David's memo on the canal assessment committees methodologies. So, if there's any further discussion, if anybody wants to have further discussion of the methodologies, now would be the time to indicate that so it can get put on an agenda, a future agenda.
I'm not interested in changing the current methodology, and I'd like to thank and congratulate David for his complete report. I think he did a wonderful job.
I'm, I'm with Tom.
I concur.
I'm in agreement.
We're all supporting our current methodology.
So, we received a email, you all have it, from the one resident in Burnt Star Isles who keeps asking the question. So, do you want to respond or do you want me to respond?
You can respond.
On behalf of council, that the discussion is basically status quo?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to clarify this for, for the, for the public here and people out there listening, what the issue?
Sure.
Yeah.
The, when the Florida legislature first authorized the, what are now our canal assessment districts to maintain the canals and to maintain the seawalls, they did so by special act that allowed the, allowed the city to charge a fee, which actually was, I mean, it was a tax, that it was established as a taxing district. And at that time, they set the tax on a per lot basis, believing that that was some, the reasonable way of doing it. And, and the special act actually was more of a, more similar to a setting forth a special assessment district as opposed to a taxing district. That's what they called them back then. And, and over time, eventually, the legislature decided to do away with these special taxing districts, at least with respect to these canals, and authorized the city by special, by, by legislation to establish a special assessment district and make the funds available for maintenance by way of a special assessment. And the, and the city was required pursuant to that legislation to have an engineering study and, and figure out what is the most reasonable way of assessing the, the properties to gather the funds. And there are obviously a number of different ways it can be done. It can be done on a per foot basis, it can be done by, by lot, it can be done by the valuation of the property. There's any number of ways it can be done. And the methodology that the, the city chose was to maintain it on a per lot basis, because that was just a continuation of what was deemed to be appropriate by the Florida legislature. And the courts are oftentimes asked to address the reasonableness of the methodology that's chosen. And when they do, when the courts do that, they usually give great deference to the methodology that's chosen by the municipality. And it's in a rare instance, and I don't think I've found one yet, where if there's absolutely no legitimate basis for the manner in which the city councils decide how they were going to apportion the fees amongst the properties, and, and of course, let me just, I missed the point that in order to, in order to assess property, you have to be able to show that there is a benefit to that property and that the assessment is at least somewhat related to the benefit that's received. There does not need to be a mathematical precision with respect to dollar for dollar that one property is, is exactly the same as the other, otherwise it needs to be assessed differently. The most recent email that we got had to do with the fact that somebody who had maybe a large lot with a large, with a large lot was being assessed the same as someone with a small lot and that that was not...